Please mute all cell phones.
See, that was intentional.
All payers and beavers, if those of us still hanging on the 80s. Austin, if you can take the floor to permit to make the announcement.
Yes.
We have to, we do have a floor.
Yes, you're good. Really briefly, I just wanted to...
You need to project, darling.
I'll come down there. Really briefly, I just wanted to say that the government is ending the state of emergency next month, meaning planning where members need to be here in person going forward. We do allow a little bit of remote participation, but if you do choose to participate remotely, you don't count for it to form, and you can't vote. So if there's three people in the room and then you join online to be the fourth, you can't proceed with the meeting. According to the diligence attendance policy, you are allowed to miss two consecutive meetings or four within six months, and then I have to tie it off. Any questions about that? We're going to be switching to YouTube livestream within the next month or two, so that's awesome. Once we have our 80 system, it'll be very, very nice. So there's your future outlook for the upcoming months.
Excellent. Did all of our members online hear all of that? I know Ken, you got it.
Everything I've got.
Okay. Excellent. All right, moving on. Everyone, I don't believe there are any changes to the agenda, so if we could, if someone could move to adopt the agenda, please.
Move to make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
So moved.
All in favor? Aye. And then those online, if you could, if you are on camera, please raise your hand. And Kent, if you could unmute and give us your vote, please. Could somebody?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Okay, great. All right, and did everyone have a chance to look at the previous week's minutes, or meetings' minutes? Any changes, comments, questions? All right, if someone would like to move to adopt?
Make a motion to adopt the meeting as presented. No change?
Yeah.
All set. All right, all in favor? Aye. Kent? Great, thanks, sir. All right, we are moving on to the public comment period. I'm going to have Austin make an announcement about the way public comment is going to go for this session.
Okay. If you are here to make a public comment on anything on the agenda, this is the time. Once we get into the discussion of the items on the agenda, the public is no longer allowed to speak. So if you're here to speak, this is it.
And if there's anyone online, if you could, that would like to speak at public comment during this time, if you could please unmute yourself or raise your little web hand.
And please begin by stating your name and your address.
All right, so no one in the, no one physically present is signed up, and we give one last call to the folks online. And where are we going? All right, discussion and recommendation of Marvin's zoning designation for annexed petition properties. Hunter.
Okay, so this one should be pretty fairly quick. As we've done this previously in the past, we are starting to receive a couple annexation petitions from residents in either neighborhoods that are fully annexed. Weddington Chase, for example, 98% probably of the lots are in Marvin, there were five that were not. We received two annexation petitions for those properties. With that being said, we have to give them a zoning designation when, once they become annexed. In simple, the rest of Weddington Chase is RUC, and so staff's recommending to zone them RUC once they are fully annexed. I can go through the full proposal, but keep it short and sweet.
It is contiguous, but there were just, there were just five holdouts, and they, that...
Construction or anything like that.
I'm not sure of the circumstances. I'm pretty sure a few were holdouts. There may have been a few that were undeveloped there. But that neighborhood came in in phases, just throughout, over the years, in big, large groups, and these are just the last, some of the last few.
Anyone on the board have any questions or comments about this? It's pretty straightforward. All right. How about, I went right the last two times. Can I go left to three more?
Currently, I moved. I moved that the proposed zoning designation for the newly annexed properties be approved as submitted.
All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Second, aye. Someone with a second on their...
We had a second, didn't we?
Yes, Melinda.
Melinda seconded the count.
All right, I will, yes, aye.
Great, thank you. All right, so moved. All right, Manette? Here we go. Discussion and recommendation for the Heritage of Marvin, makes due zoning submitted.
All right, so this is now, I guess, the second meeting that this is on the agenda. I know a majority of you guys were here in April and did the preliminary review and saw most of that. So I'm going to turn it over to Ben, let him probably give about, you know, presentation brief overview of the changes between April and now, stuff that's came out of the PIM meetings, the last planning board meeting, the, and then the PRG meeting from last week, and kind of, you know, give an overview of the total project, and then we'll kind of get into the analysis and staff report. And my recommendation, I guess, if there's any questions for Ben during his proposal, maybe jot them down, just so we don't maybe get sidetracked, and then we can kind of come back, because I don't want to, basically him talking about one thing, and then we jump over to another. I'm trying to, I want to make sure we focus on, we're going to hit on everything, but I kind of want to make sure it stays directed in those avenues. So I'm going to turn it over to you, and I'm probably going to have to move the mic up.
Do you have a standard idea what it'd be easier or not?
Yeah, that'll be fine.
Okay. Hello, everyone.
Hello.
I provide everybody with a little piece of that, just because I love some of your job design as well. I'm going to go over basically an overview of everything from the original school, whatever on that, probably the easiest way I can do is to go through the things that changed, and where they came from, if they were PIM, if they were common, if they were common, if they were like that. So 68 lots on 47.15 acres, that's 76 acres of little time. The order is falls for 10,000 per foot lots, 70 foot water, 25 foot setbacks, five foot size, 25 foot rear yard setbacks. Our proposal, 70 foot wide lot, average block size 12,000, 25 foot feet. That gives us a dwell unit break of about 1.5, 1.55 dwell units. The common open space in the form-based code is required to be...
30%.
30%, yes, sorry, saving. We're provided 19.10, which is 3.55%. That common open space is sort of a mix of a linear park, which the linear park is the area that's hatched along the perimeter, the 100 foot buffer, along Newtown Road, and then down inside of Meadow Park. Based on a PRG comment, the part along Newtown is going to be paved with local to lighting with tires, so the lights aren't on online. There's some concerns from the PRG people that that probably shouldn't be valid, but it's doing that thing live online. Local to lighting, so it's, it lights enough to walk in the path, but it doesn't encourage people to hang out for hours, to the line, which is more of a place to walk. In the common area that, plus the 2.25 acre park in the northeast corner, which would be in this area right here, that would be the, this will be the breakpoint of the paved trail. So the paved trail will return back into the neighborhood at that point. Everything else will be the fresh concrete slash ground, so that's an H2O, I think there's a trail right out back here.
Yeah. We just put in, if anybody wants to know an example of that, we're finishing the total preserve trail, and it connects right out here. So if you literally, after this meeting, go out there, you'll see what that looks like. But that's our standard, our greenway trail construction standard.
Within that 100 foot buffer, there's a 75 foot no cut requirement, and it's smaller, spending the form-based code. There's also the paint list that has to be realized in that, in the construction, so there'll be some additional paint that can show up in the construction phase as part of the taking plan. Hunter and I have talked a little bit about how to present that properly, photos and some sort of a photos image of pages, the planes, and this is what we'll collect, so we can measure the different areas. You know, you can't just, that's like the woods bear's method, you can't go paint one spot and say, hey, this is what we're going to do.
We responded to that yesterday.
Yeah. Another interesting comment that came out of the PRG meeting is some of the areas, especially along the edge of the buffer, along the small water pond, we're going to be doing some grading, and we're not supposed to tie any of the edges in wood line. One lady on the PRG meeting made a really good request that there's a native plant list, and she would like for us to do some native plants, as opposed to just putting in, you know, crankeroil or quality, it's kind of the same thing. So we'll work through our construction plan with the PRG before we get that list of native plants, and then find out, you know, we don't want to plant a bunch of weird things that won't live. But if we can find some very important species, and then identify where they can plant it, and let the PRG have some input in that too, we're going to be starting. From a site plan revision standpoint, one of the biggest things that we got from the fellow input meeting was the location of the main drive. We were hundreds of person there, we moved it to that location, it used to be further to the west. It was actually basically straight across from a couple other driveways. We worked the OT to try to move that out. We haven't gotten into our driver equipment plans from a technical construction plan, that's the next phase. There are things that we moved into the east like we did. We may have even a little further reading, we had some discussion about tying in the driveway lining with the roundabout, so if there's no, we don't end up with the improvements from the roundabout, 100 foot stretch and nothing, and some other rooms taken off. So that's something in our construction phase, walk with the DOT, both on the roundabout side, and in the smaller construction plan, or driveway, to kind of make that work. But I think it'll help the drainage grading, all that, to kind of make those contiguous, is having that little stretch in there.
Has the question, the barrier in the middle of the road there, is that just going to be concrete, that's not going to have enough of plantings or anything, correct?
No, and it'll, well, I say none and none, it depends on what DOT will want to do with, within the existing right of way. I don't know if there'll be enough with, I'm thinking it's going to be a raised concrete median, but that's something in the construction plan phase that we'll have to visit with them. Because some of the areas where we're going to make the turn capes, we may widen, even within the existing right of way, we may widen pavement out enough that it gives us room to put some plants or something. Because I know that's important to you guys laying around down the road, just having some way to make that one look like a boulevard or some planting, you know.
Yeah, and, you know, anything that can help with the traffic calming is, and that's where my question was coming from, is just, because that's where people start to speed up, to hit that hill, so anything that can help with that.
One of the other items that we spent quite a bit of time on, we had a couple of book sessions with council, looking over some of the, some of the architectural features of the houses. On the net, on the second and third sheet of the handout that I gave you, the second sheet is the revised elevations based on legs conversations. And if you, it only changed one elevation, if you flip to the third page real quick, you can see there's a house that's circled in black. You can look at the same house on the, on the second sheet, and you can tell how it changed. That was really the only house that we discussed. It is a great link. The big thing that we came up with out of those meetings was, there was a strong desire to use a multitude of materials to make the house. I'm trying to think, our architect said it a really interesting way, to, we want to make the, we want to make it look sort of rich and vibrant and really pretty, but we don't want it to look trendy, because it's a heritage district. So we came up with things from metalwork accents, a lot of gable treatments, so like your roof goes up to a gable instead of having nothing there, like the old silly kind of looking effect then. We have several house plans where we have like little wood treatments that go in there. That was a big thing. Some shed grist on the front porches, utilizing different portions of the form-based code where the front porch can encroach over the front setback on a certain number of houses. Do things like that to break up the monotony of the streetscape. Also do things like, some garages, some houses would be like a two-car front door garage, other houses would be like a carriage garage setup, so you could pull it out in the middle of your house, you've got a two-car garage on one side, and a one-car garage, and then flip it to two-car garage, straight ahead, and then one-car garage. Because I think the biggest thing was, they didn't want the, they didn't want the monotony of like a new neighborhood, they still wanted it to feel like it had been there for many, many years. So that was some, that was some of the big takeaways from the work session, from an architectural standpoint. Another thing that came up with the porches was not to use all the same kind of railings on the front porches. Try to find some cool designs that may, I'm going to say the wrong word, not necessarily Victorian, but something that has a spiral, or something that has a top treatment, as opposed to just a standard black, you know, railing. So those, those work sessions were, they were very interesting, and they were very, you know, they were, the ideas and how they went full circle was kind of, was interesting. Some native, they talked about using some local slash native materials, that kind of came back to some, to be sure we mixed in some red brick, which is kind of native to the area, so we took that into account, some of those elevations as well. Two-story porches on a couple of them, anything that would, they wanted it to look nice, they just didn't want it to look trendy.
Seven bone stables, is that right?
Pardon?
Seven bone stables?
Yes. Yeah, we'll probably end up with nine. Those are conceptual, so we didn't, we haven't, we haven't come up with the other two yet, but they'll be in that general, in that general setup.
No houses next door across the street that are same?
No houses next door across the street that are same. Yeah, we actually, and we did, I didn't bring that up. I would bring that during the construction plan phase. I actually have a picture of two houses on two lots, they're the exact same house with different elevations. And it was a 13, it was a 15-minute conversation about, you know, prove to us it's the same house, and pull up the floor plans. So we really, we really take a lot of pride in, if you go down a row of houses, that even though three or four of those eight houses may be the same house, you can't tell that they're the same house from an elevation standpoint. A mix of materials, mix of colors. In addition to just the shape of the elevation, we also limit the color scheme. So you may have a house that's like a French country, and a house that's maybe like a Georgian, but they can't be the same color schemes, they have to be, you know, it can't be gray and blue and whatever other color, you've got to, you have to put those going down too.
What is the color palette? Like, what is the, you know, like, armor pretty much go, like, any insane color?
On that second page, there's some, no, you're fine. The other thing that you'll see on that second page is there's a couple different white bricks. So in addition to having a painted white brick, which everybody was kind of on the borderline of, is that trendy, or is that historic? Those kind of whitewashed bricks will offset that, so we can have those, you don't just have a painted white house, you can have a lighter shade house if someone wanted without that painted.
So what is the difference between the ones listed here, and then the ones in the Heritage Department, makes you use any draft agreement? Yeah, so it's the other development agreement, thank you. This is like, it's not as much for...
The ones that are in the draft development agreement were provided by Joe Tomes.
Can you pull those three pictures up?
Basically, what it is, is that these were three of other developments, and it's kind of showing.
And these are our houses, they're not, they're not some other neighborhood that I went in.
That would be...
It would. It would. Because there was a really cool one, there was a really cool one in Charleston that are...
We don't build it, why?
Yeah, but I didn't have to say it, but we don't build that house, yeah.
Yeah, I like, I like these, I'm personally just not comfortable with red brick, but I really like the ones that have good pictures.
It's funny, I have a funny red brick story. A company that I worked with many years ago, they built a spec house, and I drove by it almost every day, developing rents in their neighborhood. And I kept saying, I don't know who picked these colors out, nobody's going to buy this red brick house. And when the red brick house got built, with the two-story porch and the color scheme all got good, I live in it now, so. I got, I got the thrill on that one.
I'm not sure.
So...
I'm not sure if it was something...
This house is kind of a lifelike representation of this house right here. It is the front roof, you're exactly right. So that house on the far, the upper left, is a scaled-down version of this house. So what this, what everyone liked about in those architectural meetings were the mix of materials on this. It's not all bricks, it's not all sand, it's got a, it's got a good mix, and it, to them, they felt like that was kind of, that house looked like it had been there for a while, it was a new and trendy jam, or things like that. Can you go to the next one, Hunter? I can just talk right through each one.
Hello, we're trying to share the screen.
I'm sorry.
Sharing the wrong screen with me.
I'll wait.
You can go with one of the seven cables.
You have to go into, into the, yeah, it's up here.
I'll have to think. The paint manufacturers tell us 10 years.
I haven't had, I'm going to say somewhere, especially here in the south, somewhere between Mike 7 and 10. I think some of them, you get, like, I have some houses in my neighborhood, they're, they're 20 years old, and then they're on the second time, and they ain't in. But they, one of the guys probably on like, he's 16, it's on the second time, and then another guy, this house is more shady, this, this house of 20 years still looks fairly well, it's really good.
They sing the less, too.
So the interesting part is, one of those white bricks is actually, it's set up in the painting, so it has a treatment on the outside, but we sold four houses when people bought that brick and left it, and it looks really pretty, it looks very white on. Yeah, yeah. But it's set up to take the, it's set up to take the paint.
Is that what that is? I don't want to skip ahead, actually.
Yeah, this is actually it, right here.
It does have like weather factor.
Yeah, that's what it looks like.
Okay, so that's what white houses are, you saying, and that, or you're painting whatever, right?
Yeah, you can paint whatever, you can paint gray, or whatever you want, yeah.
It certainly looks, it's been there for some time.
And will the, I don't know if I can skip ahead, but will the HOA, once it's, once you're built out, it's established, will the HOA be in control, colors, materials?
Yeah, there'll be an architectural review committee. While we're building, it'll be us, until we're basically 95% out, and then turn it over, yeah.
And just, I do, Ben got me a copy of their draft CCRs this morning, I haven't reviewed them fully yet. With that being said, looking at previous, like, initial documents like that, I think the manager's an example, is that if, if approved, we can make that a condition that the residential CCRs come back for review, the planning board, and council before those approve, before the final final approval, and stuff like that, meaning that if, so you guys have a chance to review them, potentially add any input on those conditions and stuff like that.
Because one of the important things on the, on those HOA documents, they have a, in addition to the maintenance agreement, they'll have a maintenance section in there too. Some of that can't be finalized until our construction plan, or plan to finalize, because we may have a funky, we may have a funky stormwater control outlet that's got certain things, we're going to put both the HOA documents and the maintenance, so folks that are buying in, when they review those, are going to, they're going to know what they're buying into, so. I was going to say, this is, this is another house that we build, this house is actually on a 70-foot wide lot. This house is an example of the courtyard, so you drive straight into a two-car garage to the left, that's a one-car garage. A lot of folks turn it into a jam, that's where it marked their golf cart. But the big thing that the, the architectural reviews came up, the architectural needs brought out of that, they liked the little metal shed roofs over the, on the front facade of the houses. They also liked, you can see the gable treatments on that house, so there's, there's different ones, there's corbels on the lower one, the high one's got the little wood, and that's also got a mix of materials on it too. And it actually has two different kinds of cementus siding, it's got, like, the old board matting up on top, and then it's got the regular horizontal, and then some, some brick at the bottom. The houses in this one are going to be, the majority of them are going to be brick, with a mix, kind of like that, that front of the plan we looked at first, so it's going to be more of a mix like that, as opposed to something like this. But this had some of the architectural features that showed up really good. Sorry, I'm going to stand up and look right up at it. And then this last one is just, that's a, that's a painted white brick house, so. But it also has the, it's got the metal shed roofs, the metal shed roof over the dormers, those are things that everyone liked. That color, something like that with, like, the, the blue shutters, everyone seemed to like that, because it's new enough, but it still looks a little bit, it still looks a little bit like it's been there for a while, so. Our architect is going to work really hard on our color palettes, because I think that's going to add, that's going to add, it looks like it's been there for a while, but, you know what I mean, like, the consensus on the, from the council members is no brown shutters. I think everybody said that they hated brown shutters, so we took, we took those off, we think, off of elevations.
Ben, is there anything else, or is that kind of it?
Yeah, that's fine.
So, is there any, I mean, I'm going to get into it now, my, the staff report, if I need, if there's any questions, I guess if we can answer them, if there's any direct questions based on that presentation, please somebody ask right now, but either way, he's not willing to wear, so. Well, I can get into my report if you guys are ready, and then go from there, and like, you know, go from discussion to questions. Okay, stop, and then we'll, I'd like to deliver a sub plan. All right, so, getting into, you everything, the wholesome deal is that, basically, once again, this is being done as a zoning application, with the Marvin Air District following the form-based code standards, and the procedures outlined for our conditional zoning map requirements. Basically, this is kind of, as I mentioned in the cover, you know, this is step seven in that floor charting, that you guys are making your review and recommendation. After the, after tonight, you will, you know, for recommendation today, we'll go to council for call for public hearing next week, and then have a sketch of public hearing for August. With that being said, I'm going to kind of go through some just step-by-sets of the, of our ordinance, the analysis, and how to comply with that. So, as Ben mentioned, the, it's for 68 homes, and there's a lot with those, the basically small white, small white design in the form-based code, so all that complies with the minimum standards. Conservation land, they have 48.55%, which is over our home of 30%. They're also dedicating public trails, and we'll have additional recreational committees inside for residents, as well as sidewalking stuff, to title. Once again, the goal of that is part of the form-based plan, the land's plan, and the smaller area of the air district is creating pedestrian-friendly atmosphere, having connectivity to existing residential developments, as well as, you know, the future of the build-out of the air district. So they're providing that access and opportunity there. Tree preservation, they have the underfoot tree perimeter buffer throughout the development, that 75-foot no cut along the existing southern part of the development along Meadow Park. That, as Ben mentioned earlier, during, you know, if approved during the construction plan phase, will have, that'll kind of be able to see that vision of thickness. The reason that's not announced, but at one, it's already part of the order, is they have to comply with that anyway, that's just another step that they, during that process, can make, if they're applying, will be complying with that section. So, they, they mention it in their site plan proposal here, as well as it is in the ordinance, and will have to be compliant with. Water and sewer, that is being worked on with the Union County, I believe that the applicant is anticipating a state of sketch plan, updated sketch plan.
August 15th.
Just kind of reiterate theirs, the county did come down with some of their hump station approvals. That has been kind of been discussed and worked on with the applicant in Union County. That does not, in fact, necessarily result in, resulting in either the approval or not. If it's approved, and they don't get their sewer approvals, well, then the development is not going to happen. But that's kind of how the village is controlled, as in, that, that approval. Getting into outside agency notes, once again, very important area, this is, Ben discussed with DOT, those improvements, as well as additional staff recommendations and everything, have been taken into consideration, but the kind of the full aspect of the driver department itself, if approved, will be part of the next, next step. However, the applicant has met those initial comments and feedback, either from members at, at the public board meeting, staff, or comments from the CDOT. Same thing with Union County Schools, they did provide for our ordinance... Same thing with Union County public schools, they did provide for our ordinance a school impact study. That will be, um, on that first page, if you guys stand out, and it does kind of give you that design impact. That also becomes an exhibit of their development agreement, uh, the full detailed report of that study. And when Union County shares, Wesley, Chaplain Fire, all that, I think you submitted.
We haven't submitted, we have to have, we have to give them this, give them a site plan, and they issue that letter for that.
Okay, so, so, so those additional staff, um, outside agency approvals will be, are required in the next step. They're not necessarily fully required during this initial rezoning phase. The applicant held two public involvement meetings earlier this year, um, the first one being on April twenty-eighth, and the second being on Dean Second. We had a pretty good turnout for, for both of those. Um, as the applicant mentioned, there were questions, comments, feedback received during those meetings, and most of those have been addressed. Now, obviously, one of the biggest ones was the density slash number of housing and so on. Um, so now getting into now compliance with the Form Base Code. The applicant is compliant from their supplemental with all applicable sections of the Form Base Code. The only kind of deviation that they're asking for is, um, a deviation with accessory structure setbacks. Our current ordinance states ten feet, ten feet, and, uh, ten feet on the rear, ten feet on the side. Basically, allowed a five-foot for accessory uses and structures to basically business model law. Um, that's, that's one of their only, the only deviation from any of our rules is in that, in their request. Landes Plan and other plan adopted, um, consistencies. So since this is a legislative zoning change, has to be, the planning board slash union council will have their, their decision has to stay consistent or consistent with Landes Plan. Staff lines, you know, it does meet the consistency of the Landes Plan, um, as well as the smaller area plan. As I will note out in one day, is that residential density, however, because of all the other goals of rezonation with open space pedestrian, um, all that, and all that still in it. So, um, as well as with the small area plan, that was adopted, that was adopted after the Landes Plan and added as an amendment to our Landes Plan. And does identify this property as residential only, and the density of the overall district all being taken into consideration for, uh, you know, long-term of the air district. With that being said, what, I guess now, any questions?
Can you say what you said about the ten feet in between, maybe the five feet in between some lots would be used in that five-foot space?
Yeah, so, our, the part of this middle, um, on the, on the first page you have this hanging out. Says, like, pool setbacks and accessory use and setbacks, be five feet from the side of the property lines. That's the property lines of the individual lots. Our ordinance states they must be in the ten, ten, pools must be fifteen and ten now, when we adopt that ordinance, or when council adopted that ordinance in June. So basically, because it is smaller lots, that, that's their only request. So I think, if you want to add on to that, because don't you guys have the CCRs, the maximums of those accessory structures and side pools?
So, it wasn't really, it's not living so much for, like, a shed or something like that. Some, a lot of the buyers of this, in these size lots, like to have, like, a small, almost like a bit of a corner, like a quarter pool. They also like to have a deck in, like, an outdoor rolling yard, maybe like a fireplace. With the ten-foot accessory setbacks, that really crunches out if we can get the relief to the five feet that gives room to put the little pool in, and maybe put a fireplace or sitting area on the backside.
That's an example of that, nothing's, I'm scared any accessory structures on right now.
Correct, none of those.
I'm sorry, so the response is not, let's make the lots a little bigger? The response is, let's change our licenses, or change, like, what we have suggested? I'm, I'm just asking for clarification, I'm not trying to be difficult.
No, that's fine, yeah.
But as opposed to adding five more feet to each of these lots, we're saying, let's give, let's change. And I know we don't have a lot of large lots left to be developed in Norman, but I'm just saying.
This is, like I said, this is a part of a request from the applicant part of their supplemental. During the conditional rezoning phase, like they take, look at courtyards, all those places, they have a deviation table of what ordinance they've mediated, what requests and stuff they have. And that's all taken into consideration, or was taken into consideration with those developments. Basically, I actually brought the, it's the data, it's the cottages, a great example. Cottages at Martin Gardens, basically same line, line design, all this stuff. Well, they have some of these larger lots, such as like the cul-de-sac lots here, that I've already been asked, hey, can we propose one or something? Well, they didn't ask for deviation, in certain cases, what has to apply is a part of the standard. We did amend that, um, for that reason, to kind of take it into full consideration. And that was actually, this was being proposed prior to us adopting that ordinance. Um, so, that, once again, it's, it's kind of like, it's kind of so good to staff or indoor, uh, for their homeowners. If they're, they want to do it, the staff doesn't have to come back to you guys later, if you guys are other texting them in, or if that, it's already not being proposed. Now, it's past recommendation, you guys can recommend that to not be deviation or power, but it's, it's not something that, um, like I said, that, that's what deviation will be part of there if approved. Just one of their issues.
I guess just, for my clarification, then, what would be, if, if you're okay with this deviation, why would we not then give all our current residents the same opportunity and make the minimums five feet? Like, why would, why, what would be the equitable opportunity then for all of our, because we, we literally just decided this, right? So why would we not then change it for everybody in Martin?
Because that's the reason why this is set up as a conditional district, because it does provide that opportunity for the applicant to propose something like this. Because the reason why it's a conditional district is so, either certain, basically, when these developments are proposed, they're gonna have some type of flexibility slash higher quality standard. Um, when we proposed that accessory use and structures amendment early in this year, basically, like, that's applying to everything existing slash, you know, your Marvin R and R C districts. Um, and it's not the height, and in my opinion, I think it's needed for those, because of the larger lots and so on. Um, so this is mainly, like I said, it's catered specifically for this development. Yes. So like, for any future air district proposal, it doesn't necessarily mean that they get to get it. It means that they would have to ask for something like that, on their residential portion and certain things, if, if they so choose.
But once we set it, does that not then set a precedent and make it harder for us to tell somebody else to do that?
No, because with it being conditional zoning, you guys are taking this development each proposal as a case by case basis.
But it also, I mean, because we had a conversation before, we're totally in, set a precedent, and then we have a conversation where, like, clearly we set a precedent.
In, in simple terms, yes, it sets a precedent, but in legal terms, you don't have to make that, like, in, in your, like, if you guys, if this was approved, and somebody else, like, led for a technical cane, and they proposed something like that, but you didn't think it was a good fit, all because you allowed, all because it was approved for another development, does not mean it has to be approved for this, for, for future moments. It's a specific addition to this proposal.
And I appreciate that, I feel like we had this conversation about, I mean, I, I just.
I understand what you're coming from, but I get it. It's like, it's the same concept of, if a variance, like, came to board adjustments, they don't, that always gets brought up, but from a legal factual standpoint, is that you, it's a case by case basis that you do not have. They can, the applicant can argue that you set precedent, but you don't have to consider that.
So explain in a minute, it's a five, they're asking for five each, ten.
But, and that could happen on both sides, right? So we could end up with ten feet in between these homes, in between their projects in their backyard, rather than twenty feet.
Correct.
In between, and we would not, as a neighbor, we would not be able to say, like, get that extra. So by what my five feet, that person did, as opposed to we had the twenty feet I'd actually have, I mean.
Like I said, I mean, that's, I mean, that's another fair point, I don't, you, you might have more experience.
I mean, really, the, I kind of put it in there that way, off of the other examples I had. It's really, I'm really asking for more on the back as opposed to the sides, so, I mean, if we wanted to, if we wanted the condition that it's a, it's a reduction on the back and not on the side, that's okay.
So the back closer to the neighborhood, or closer to the neighborhood?
So, like, in the back of the lot, so, for example, like, so like in these backyards. Not on the sides, just on the backyard.
What's the distance between them?
They're five-foot side setbacks.
Yeah, well, actually.
Well, they're five, see, they're.
Couldn't do it anyway, it's that.
Actually, I think the side would be fine, because I think we would. It's ten feet, a little bit of a smaller, first, because Weddington Chase, I think, had some five-foot setbacks, or something like that. But if this model, the platted, the subdivision, had the smaller side setback, that doesn't apply to the rear stints, we don't ask for a five-foot on the rear anyway.
You're saying the distance.
So it has to go on there?
Well, it would be that.
Ten feet?
Yeah.
So it's twenty, twenty.
I mean, most of the, the smallest, the smallest backyard is like seventy.
Ten feet to the line, ten feet to the line.
So like fifty feet to play with in the backyard, but it, it's the, I mean, I can see where the backyard.
If the, if the ordinance had been revised, or it's five foot on the sides, it's, because if that's what, that's what the setback is, it's probably a loophole for discussion, obviously.
Yeah, because I, actually, and that's what I remember when we adopted it, and I thought I, I, that came up, there were one of our, just with me and you, you was discussing.
The only place I can even see being needed.
Yeah, it wouldn't be inside there. Well, they'll show up on the green, plenty of new york construction lanes, the steps between the pads and the car spaces, as such, if you can.
So it'd have the five feet from the back, five feet from the back, and that's five feet from the property line. So they have that little area in between to do an accessory structure, say that right?
No, it would be five foot from the back property line, so like now it has, um, twenty-five foot.
So five feet from the back property line, nothing, nothing on the obstruction line?
Yeah, so instead of having a twenty-five foot rear setback, we would be able to encroach into that rear setback. Now we could encroach fifteen feet, we'd be able to encroach ten feet.
So they could put accessory structure right on the property line?
No, it'd still be five foot on.
It'd still be five foot on.
Oh, is that nice?
Yeah, so, just to clarify, so when we did adopt, when the council adopted the accessory structure for the side setback, it's ten feet with the same setback as the principal structure, whichever less will apply. And the reason we did that is because there are certain developments, like, I mean, to, to kind of get back to all inclusive, that do have five-foot setbacks. And so that's why we did take them into consideration at that time. So you don't necessarily, so with that, you'd only be asking for the rear, because the rear is ten feet across the board.
If the rear's already ten feet across the board, I'm good, I can just completely remove it.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll take that deviation off, I'm sorry.
It's not like I'm gonna do this, but, so, a pool and a fire pit or patio is, they are, are the same, like, in terms of?
Pool, no, from an accessory structure, pools are defined as different.
I don't know how, I mean, I just said a pool is.
They just, they put those, those little twelve by twenty boards, people asked for them. I don't know, I don't know that we'll have a lot of people ask for them, but when we were going through this, I wanted to be sure I got all the deviations out early, and that's the only one I think.
Do you know if you have pools with like twelve, eleven?
We have a lot of pools. Uh, from a backyard standpoint, the, the distance from the backyard, they have total to their property line usually, an average of forty feet. They have a foot, they have a thirty-foot rear setback, and Weddington, you can use fifteen feet of that for the water surface of the pool. So basically, you end up with a, you walk down your steps, you have about three feet, there's your pool, the deck can overlap. So it's odd people will put the travesty a little further over that, that back setback.
Well, in this, do you see room enough for?
I see on someone like the, yeah, like, yeah, like this lot.
Sorry, which number?
Go ahead. So, like, lot forty-six, for example.
And the cul-de-sac lots again.
And the cul-de-sac lots, yeah.
And that's exactly how it is, like, the inquiries that I got for the cottages, just using an example, it wasn't necessarily the, like, plot by plot, like, lots that were right at the three thousand or, uh, square feet lots. It was the ones that were slightly larger, that had some of this room to do that. But, yeah, once again, because of the way our ordinance read, and that the applicant for Martin Gardens at the time, they didn't ask for that deviation. So it's more, like I said, that was made as a recommendation, just that, because then it's clear, it's already in there, and you don't have to figure out, you don't have to interpret the way, certain things.
Well, if you remove the deviation, then it's compliant to cover.
Yeah.
I think the people whose backyards abut each other, I mean, they would be grateful for the additional five feet.
But those lots, really those lots, the way the cycle break out, those lots would be really tough to put, even a small pool, and they'd have to put everything large on them. So, we wouldn't encourage that.
Didn't necessarily know that sixty-eight homes were really gonna go into, I mean, so like, and, and I don't think it's that way, where people all face their way up exactly what they can.
Exactly.
You know, and so I think that the additional five feet for the neighbors in the backyard, that sometimes that can make all the difference. Then they've got nothing to plant additional trees, put in their fence, whatever it's to have, without it actually then being.
Right.
Seven and a half, like, feet, what, your idea, so I think that I appreciate that concession. You know, something I haven't thought of is, how, how do you guys handle fences in your backyards? Like, is there?
So there's no double fences, they go on the property lines. Um, the one thing we haven't decided here, a lot of these, a lot of these more kind of historic slash downtown districts, they do let the folks fence in their front yard, just to give them more of a, I'm gonna settle my front porch and, and talk to folks. Normally, we go from the back corner of the house to the side property lines and to the back property line. So there's no double fences, so if you're the first person to move in, you put up four sides, then your neighbor will put up three sides, and then the next neighbor, kind of like that. So we stay consistent, we do a lot of black aluminum. Um, one of the things that we're doing here is we're trying to find some different styles, to allow, so, like, they have a wooden picket, we're trying to find something like that that would fit in to some folks' budget to do something like that. So we have a little bit of variety, but it's still consistent.
Do we want to see a bunch of different types of fences, like, different heights and?
No, we'd like, our HOA docs will keep it consistent. It'll be no more than six, no less than four, and they'll be, it'll, most likely be black aluminum. Uh, we did talk a little bit about wood pickets, but I don't, the mix of that would be really weird after we started talking about it, so.
So no split rail?
Yeah, no split rail. No, that just, I mean, it looks neat, but these lots are small, you don't get the effect of the split rail, because you have two sections of driveway, and then half a section that, you know, it just, it doesn't fit well.
We haven't discussed, um, I know I have things all around my house, one other than artery back in the day, but, um, front fences, front yard fences?
Yeah, no, that's a good point, um, our, and I'll have to tell a church one place, because I don't think it was addressed before this, but. But our ordinance states now, I mean, just, our, there are some ordinance of that, it can be in the front side yard, and then the front maximum height, I think it's four or five feet. And then the rear maximum, rear side, I think it's six or eight, I think it's four and eight. Um, with that being said, I don't think we want that, especially like with, with this. And so, um, that can be a recommended, recommended, recommended condition, um, as well, I mean, because I, I don't think you guys have it, but you have an issue with it.
No, it's really something that we won't be able to decide until we get into the construction phase anyway, because once we get the utilities, and some things in, you know, the utilities, the phone line generally goes a couple foot behind the sidewalk, and the power line goes back there. But by the time we give them room for the reasements, you know, it might, it might be, it might be, you know, one of those points. So we would be okay going from the back corners like we normally do, and we do have one development, we let, we let them come up half the distance of the house. But that development has bigger side setbacks, so it's, it's a little more uniform. I think going from the back corner of these houses back would be, would be fine.
As well, and just to also clarify, ordinance with fences, there is no setback, it can be on the property line, as long as it's on the front.
All their utilities are back, is that, all their utilities are down the alley.
The photos are so, with the fences in front, those are just follow-ons.
Those aren't follow-ons, yeah.
Those aren't real fences.
We don't want to let you out till you sign.
That's right.
Well, I, I'm not, I don't think this front fences are necessarily appropriate for this, so, just where it is.
So do you, do you want to make that a recommended condition to? Because we can, basically, what I want to do is, I was now kind of getting into more discussions that, get a consensus on some of these things, and then whatever the motion is, we can all have, you guys have an understanding of what, what, what conditions, and what, I mean, how we need.
Well, again, I think we need to, because utilities are gonna be front, and we're gonna have fences, so somebody's gonna hurt it up, and they need to replace it. Well, again, I think we need to, because utilities are going to be front, we're going to fence, so somebody's going to rip it up and maybe to replace it on.
We do, so.
We do.
Yeah, I, I always.
We don't, we don't want to know, so, that's, I mean, people can be crazy all the time. I have a special fence, not absolutely negative.
Just like an explanation.
Our recommendation, we can put it in.
No, thanks, yeah, we're providing an explanation.
All right, what's, what's next, is there still just a discussion, no, or is there more that you want to?
I mean, I know, I went through a lot of this, I know that was here last month, um, much prior to kind of abbreviated, but, you know, if there's any specific questions on anything, like if you have an answer, um, I know, if you're guys back, if I had, I know, um, and all that information, so.
What was the fee in lieu of, was that, I don't remember reading it.
For a part of the dedication, or was that actually like that?
It was like about the park.
Discuss the in lieu of potential improvements to be made by the developer after proposed.
Oh, I mean, the staff recommendation, so, these are just recommended conditions, and this is stuff that's briefly been discussed, and once again, any of these specific conditions have to be reached because of legally how the conditional district's set up, that has to be agreed upon between the village and the applicant. Um, it's, it's been discussed that they are developing, they're, they are donating that two and a half acres for that, that park, however, they're not going to be any improvements. Part of the reason that, I mean, why, it's one, you know, if this is approved, we don't necessarily rush how the park is going to work and what it may be, so that's something the council, what the PRG would work on, I'm sure that should probably come to you guys as well. Uh, with that being said, that was just one of the things that, since they are putting or donating, looking at it, if, if you have potential for future improvements and so on, it's been done in other, um, either other some of the conditional zone, but that's just mainly for discussion point, if that's something you guys are interested in, plus, it's kind of also has to be a neutral good problem.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm, I'm fine with that, except for, just don't want any entrances or exits, like car entrances or exits, off of that leg, just because it's, there's no natural place to, you know what I mean?
And that's what came up with discussion with council, um, and even in discussions with that, because.
The PRG board brought that up too.
Yeah.
About not trying to, not trying to plan until they had it, because they weren't sure, A, what they wanted it to be, and kind of B, how, how would best be accessed initially in the, in the heritage district creation.
Yeah, and, you know, part, access to parks and certain things, like, that's why having the two and a half acres and such things, if the rest of the heritage district develops out, you, you're going to have opportunity for either the park or, or having that connectivity to it, so that's why it's like, we're not going to, they're not going to put in a park and then not have a, have certain access to it, but.
So the park will, will be able to residence with this neighbor?
Well, that two and a half acres of the top speed, the long-term goal is for it to connect into the whole heritage district and have, and simply other, uh, once other developments potentially happen, you'll have that ability and that, that investment access to park and nearby, potentially on plans or something else, but maybe long across to don't have a decision. Yeah.
I mean, do you know the access, access, presence here is included in there?
And so that's what, like I said, with, there's just so many, what, especially, I mean, the police are around about and other stuff, so that's why it's being donated, but then that's something that council staff try to work, put in order to, to work at this. So, so, yeah, I guess, any questions on it from?
You gave us three possibilities, um, what to?
Yeah, I said, you, you guys, when ready to make a recommendation, you can recommend as presented, recommend with, you know, additional conditions for council consideration, example being, you know, not allowing or not permitting any type of front fencing. Uh, or you can recommend that council deny, deny the application slash, you know, go from there, but. Not necessarily.
The conditions that were in the memo and the no front fencing were added into the, into the draft motions for you guys.
Oh.
Yeah, I just said that, so if you refresh, they're there.
From on, to your.
What were your construction, do you know where your construction entrance would be?
Our construction entrance would be off the main entrance.
Off the main, it's not off the fire?
Right.
On road D, right?
Yes.
That's correct. Are these going to be built, fences, or is it called?
It's sixty-eight lots that we build at one time.
What's your tactic, protection, and what do you guys hope?
Uh, if we can, if everything within the county goes forward with the lift station, I would expect it to be breaking ground probably by this time next year.
And finish?
And finish June, July, so the next year, probably start, probably, probably ask for our.
Year, year, half?
Mm-hmm, yeah, and then probably, you know, it's always a guess, probably two and a half to three years, sell out, and then another year after that, build out.
So you'll go ahead and build spec homes?
We won't build spec homes, we'll sell them, but we'll open it up, once we get through, once we get the roads paved and we get our sewer inspections and we can come in for our final flat, we'll go ahead and start selling at that point, which usually grabs us about a month at the end, as we're doing some cleanup and things like that.
I understand.
Correct.
And so you want to have a lot of homes?
We, because this is a new series, we're going to have a lot of homes, probably three of them.
And where would, where would those, uh, be?
It, well.
Does it mean you'd be parking?
Well, probably, yeah, that's what I was going to say, based on the parking needs that we would have, so we would probably have a parking lot and then two models and a third, or maybe a parking lot, model, model, model. And I'll tell you that, and then my boss will come and say, no, we're going to do it over here, but, yeah. Yeah, they're going to be really close to the entrance, yeah, somewhere falls Weddington, go in the entrance and turn right there, right there.
So then you can just break up the parking lot?
The parking lot wouldn't be one of our lots, it'd be the last lot to sell.
Okay, yeah.
And that's typical, and that's how it's done, with most developments, that's where it's got to come from.
Um, were you connected with this, um, specifics?
I did.
About that?
I did, we talked about doing a, a mix of holly and hardwoods, or some of the, whatever retreat we could come up. Pretty much across, you know where his driveway is fairly close, go probably thirty feet past his driveway and do some backyard privacy, and then come all the way out to the road right away. So it, it encourages people to walk down that trail that turns back in, to turn back in, not like, hey, I can go through the woods and go on metal arch, so. Uh, the other thing, we're going to work with him, he has, um, some septic issues, so I'm going to work with him in county, see if I can get him an easement to be able to connect his sewer open to our cul-de-sac here.
Yes, thank you.
So.
Um, what are you guys going to do about current, um, there's currently a fence disrepair, it's kind of.
It'll go, like, the old farm fence that's there, yeah, we'll need to remove that part. We'll probably try to come up with something a little bit cool when we do that path down through there, maybe some sections of split rail, or maybe we just add some additional plantings and get rid of the fence completely. So I don't know, P G PRG, or Little Lady's brought up that she wanted to make sure we didn't completely close out off, because there's some wildlife goes back and forth, so.
But they can jump, they can jump out.
Oh, yes, yeah. Metal arch, yeah. There's an old farm fence to be done.
Okay, so, it's like, it's all good.
Oh, oh, that's, oh, okay.
There are a lot of trees on that side that have a lot of vine action going on, and I, we, I call it car wash, and sometimes the vines have been done on the metal arc, and we have two out there, and they're hanging down, and.
That's it?
I don't know.
Yeah, there are a couple pretty good kids, like, all breaked, is it over there yet?
Yeah. But it's just, you know, there are trees tangled up, and it's been a fall, and it's just kind of a mess over there, so, but, you know, a mess is also a barrier, so.
Real quick, I will mention, so, in your guys' package, it's the draft document, and, uh, this was submitted to me last week, and has been briefly reviewed by me as well, uh, to Japanese, but if approved, um, the standards and certain things, and will be a part of the document, or anything like, the house elevation, and all of that, and that gets tied, you know, with their site-specific plan and everything. Uh, there are these things that I've already made recommendations on to, to adding in, mainly it's just to, uh, clarify, um, certain requests that the applicants already kind of conveyed, you know, through this presentation, but just make sure it's in here, if it wants to be improved. Basically, you know, if, if the document's approved, well, then this site specifically set for this site-specific plan as well is what the conditions and everything set within the document, for some reason, if something ever happened, and this was property on itself, they had to follow this or come to us for a, for another resulting slash amendment to, to that. Um, so, once again, basically, your guys' recommendation, whatever council consideration, if this improves, what you see is what, um, will be permitted there.
So, this, so this is tied to the?
The, the document agreement?
Yes.
Yes.
It'll have all the conceptual elevations in it, it'll have, yeah.
You've seen everything that's going to be in here, it's just getting that final format and some, some additional stuff. Like I said, I've sent it to our attorney, um, so he might have some recommendations, but the overall context in here and language has been presented, and like, once again, we're making sure everything that's been discussed, agreed upon, recommended, changed, all of that's tied into it, so, um, once again, basically, it's about, holds the applicant developer.
And, um, underwriting, you guys are resuming the, um, maximum number of years in this lane?
Yeah, that's, um, was, because I haven't been able to identify what the best name, I gotta define my own words and put that in there. But basically, what that means is that, once approved, there's a certain amount of time invested in the development to, to get a good construction completion. If something were to happen, then this is happening here, so it's best to work after the date of approval never starts. But basically, what that states is, is if that, that occurs, and that time elapses, then it would just be, um, down, downed on, or that, it basically initially reselling, um, reselling within, fall back in place.
That's a tricky, that's a tricky, uh, timeframe, because.
Well, which addition, what do you guys have?
With the Adashon 160B, there's certain testing periods for every, it's a different type of development, I want to say.
But this one has, is, is somewhat dependent on, yeah, are you dependent on, on the N C D O to round it up?
Am I dependent? Yeah, yeah, that's where we told you.
And that's where the, that's where the, kind of, wrenches.
And now, on what that's saying, basically, construction must start with that timeframe, if that's been asked before, we agree with that timeframe. Um, I want to say minimum for, you know, resident, for a major subdivision or conditional zone, I want to say five years, and that's the statement of what the best period is, I'll, I'll just have to double check with that.
And then once started, do you timeframe kitchen?
Basically, basically, the way that testing states is that there's a certain amount of time, it's a hundred and eighty minutes or whatever, that's when the clock's starting, and it just depends. But I'll get, basically, that, that's, that's, that's basically what I said to the attorney, why do you do that, because we'll make sure that all that's applying with, um, some of those, those additional changes that were, that occurred in 160B.
You can just think about boys, boy chief?
No, 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 I was thinking about, um, Marvin being going in, go up an additional classroom, I mean, I guess it's, they could be still, could be spread out.
Those, those schools, that is, that's the, that's, they figure those, I don't know, I know enough to tell you dangerously about it. That's a ten-year build-out period for the neighborhood, which, most neighborhoods build out way faster than ten years. That's the maximum student loan over the, the, in whatever period that peaks in that ten years, you probably figure that. And I'm happy to, when I, we go through the construction plan phase, I could give a better explanation of that for you, and actually get the graphics.
Yeah, I, I'm more, but I, I don't actually know what Marvin's capacity is right now than just his capacity is. In twenty-three preschoolers, I mean, that's a, that's a modest amount of work at capacity.
So, in, in during the next step phase, like, once again, if approved, those outside agency approval review will be a part of their construction plan, meaning that you would have to have a letter from the county stating that they can, that when the study's sufficient slash they have the capacity to build that. If they don't, obviously, the mag is into the consideration of, um, moving forward, but, um, that is part of the next process with that outside agency.
I mean, because something you tell families, you can't move that because you're not.
Well, and once again, that's why it's, it's steps, but, um, did, like I said, the county will provide their equipment during that time.
Yeah, that's on the town.
But the, but the Sonans are the group, so.
But once again, if that's part of it, I mean, it can be taken into consideration, but it's not necessarily requirement of their supplemental. They, they meet that, what the impact study and everything is, but don't necessarily have to have that outside, I mean, approval. And to your point, I don't know what that approval is, I know, I looked at previous developments today, um, and certain ones obviously stated, yes, that the study's sufficient and that they have the capacity to meet that, and so on, some just state that, I, I don't even know if previous certain developments got the county approval for impact of schools, they just have to have that impact study as part of their supplemental.
Yeah, this, this doesn't, I mean, I haven't read the, the impact report, obviously, but this only states what the impact would be, it does not state whether or not the school can handle it, so, I mean, that, that's kind of concerning, um, to me, just because the schools don't necessarily get, the school itself doesn't have the capacity to expand unless the county's planned for it, like, unless the board of education is planning for it, so, you know, and I don't know when that, like, when, i- if, if, if that happens in phase two where the county actually will weigh in on, on the school impact, like, how, how does this even happen without, I mean, because that's a pretty big.
I can, we can.
It's, it's basically, it's over fifty kids.
Um.
No, I don't think.
Yeah, but, yeah, but I mean, it's like twenty-three preschoolers, and that's a lot of preschoolers, it's a lot, I mean, most preschools, they're all like one or two classes. That's like two preschool classes.
But that's not twenty, that's not twenty-three preschoolers, that's, that's not, those, those numbers are peaks in those graphs, that's not like on day two hundred and fifty, there's twenty-three preschoolers, there's fifty-four sixth graders. Those are, that's why I say, probably good for me to get the grasp, because you can see how the, it's how the community builds out, so the preschoolers become grade schoolers, become middle schoolers, become high schoolers, they all blame to those numbers on those graphs. So it would be interesting to bring those in the construction phase, so you can see that.
Especially if you have something, like, I know that there's areas, areas around, like, you would see where there's specific people who are moving just for the school district, right, because we have, we have that here, where people will go to.
Right.
Find every single one of these numbers, right?
Exactly.
Sit around a bit later, because they want their kids.
And like, uh.
And there's a lot of risk that, a lot of us move down here, right, which, yeah, I did, okay, so, yeah, we're.
Our kids won't get reset, our kids won't get redistricted if we're evidence.
Right, or it's, we can either pay the price or, or pay more, or live here, it's an exceptional public school situation, so I think that, um, that's something definitely worth considering, and I think that, to your point, Kelly, I think it is a little backwards, but I think that that's how we amend with, trailer show, sitting in front of Weston Chapel, getting ready to be installed now. You know what I mean, and I think realistically, then, this is very unfortunate, but since this is on the record, our neighbors are not concerned enough to bring up anything about it, right, and have concern, all of this is public information, and the bottom line is, there's not, no offense to you.
Go ahead.
No, shut up. Pitchforks. No one has said, there's not been, like, that's for concern, right, I'm worried about like teenagers lawyering law, these lip passes, and not, you know, and if it's not here, it's going to be the cul-de-sac, right, for like teenagers that don't order. Um, but our neighbors are not fundamentally concerned with Marvin headed in this direction, and quite frankly, can't be for all of them. And that's very unfortunate, that we have heard these conversations before, where if the neighbors don't want in, then they should be here.
Isn't the app a good response?
I absolutely agree, and that makes me sad, I don't want anything else, so, and even as, as Erin, who has kids in the elementary school, in a elementary school, but nonetheless, so I think, I, I hear your point, but our neighbors are concerned.
I will recommend, um, your, your guys' motion, that we can add request for the applicant slash to get comments and stuff prior to public hearing, so that something is presented, um, so that. um, so that that can be presented to the council during their consideration, because ultimately, I mean, that can be.
Comments from the county?
Yeah, comments from the school board, um, but once again, this is kind of a legacy, don't understand, uh, decision, yes, that impacts that, but some of that is out of our control slash, you know, my thought is, is that other places in the county are developing a higher emphasis than us in this quarter, you know what I mean? So, I, I don't, don't have any answer solution to that, but all we can do is potentially try to receive some of that comments and feedback and see if, you know, one, on their thoughts of a sudden, two, I mean, I don't know if they're gonna go to us, they're gonna have capacity, but, um, at least we can do, hopefully, have some of that initial comments and feedback from council.
In the interim, I have back from when the original Heritage District was starting, actually, this is before Hunter was here. I have some reports from the school board at that time. I'll send that immediately, and then I'll follow up and get a letter before them.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, I don't remember, I don't remember, they talked about capacity and, and use, and areas and things like that, I don't, I don't, it's been almost a year now, I don't remember numbers, but I can provide that down.
Okay. Yeah, well, I, it was, because we had so many teachers leave that, um, there are a lot of teachers that are like bus drivers, um, half the time, it's not a, not a, I think I kept a little school, almost every single day, bus driver, sometimes, so, just because one bus driver was doing like routes for every single school and multiple routes for elementary and middle schools, so, um, I was, and with COVID, it is actually exacerbated the problem, so I would love, I really would love to hear from Union County, um, because we don't develop enough in Marvin, but we let, we definitely allow a trickle, and we've kept the flood, you know, from them, so they really haven't had to deal with it, and this is the first kind of heavy difficulty primary that we've ever kind of let go through that would affect Marvin Elementary, so, um, I'm not quite sure, but ready for it.
Yeah, and that's.
That's a big, I mean, we've got, you know.
Yeah.
Or it's, it is hard to tell, like I said, we, we.
Yeah, that's, that's.
We have that in our, we need to try to add that in consideration, um, but like I said, I'll, I think that we can try to request that, budget information prior to the, um, as well as, I mean, if county, if council would be, I mean, that could be, basically, if whatever conditions are put upon, you know, approved, they have to do that slash you report, and they have to do anything forward, so if there's anything that comes out of that, that if council wants to consider, then that, that's something that we can discuss, I think that.
That's a very fair ask, that's not a reasonable ask, but.
Well, maybe because you don't, you don't want, you know, people living in your neighborhood.
It happened back in Fort Mill, you know, back in the day, those kids, there were kids living across from, I think at that time it was called Gold Hill Elementary, and they were riding a bus, you know, ten miles to another elementary school for two or three years till they were able to add to it, so.
It's unfair.
It almost.
Yeah, I'll provide that, I'll provide that other correspondence, and I'll, I'll push it again from the district prior to that.
That's what we should.
That's what I'm hoping, that my opinion will help you certainly, if this is, this is.
Yes.
But they're sore, I don't want to be wrong.
Yeah, here, they, from, I mean, for some reason, that's what I was, that we're really, most of Marvin will be impacted, but outside of, probably, we're less of a work position, we're potential, we're cases of, and so, we're, we're very work efficient.
Sandwiched.
We are.
Yeah, seven years ago, they did, they did actually have certain Marvin kids going to another elementary school.
Did they? And then they talked about it?
There was, it was hot, because we almost didn't hear from them, but it's.
Yeah, I expected to get kids in the primary school, so.
It wasn't Sandy Bridge, it was, it was another school that had a little delivery. We almost arrived, it was, we were in the coffee bar, back in the rezoning, and we were like, you need to tell us now.
Because we're a bunch of five fuckers, so.
Um, okay, so, I actually would like to add a, just a recommendation of, um, getting updated, um, I don't know, opinion or updated, um, from Union County just on Marvin Elementary's capacity. I'm sure the middle and high schools will probably handle those, those.
They have kind of a standard email response they give you, and it, it has all of them, it goes from kindergarten up to high school, when they send that back out.
So, yeah, we give people definitely, that, that's.
I'll put that in the draft.
I already had Austin have that, so be ready.
Awesome. Um, what other questions? Anyone online, Ken, have any comments, questions?
Don't get. I'm good, thank you.
Anything else to add?
I said, this motion, I mean, you guys have, um, made a recommendation, and whatever comes out of that, and if that's for council, you know, basically, all, basically, everything from your guys' recommendation discussion, PRG's recommendation discussion, all their updates and everything is going to be packaged together for council consideration. So, if that's, um, you know, the specific condition reservation, or met, or added to development agreement, certain conditions, all of that's what's being considered, and all of that's what we need, you know, approved, so. Those are steps.
All right, well, if, um, there are no other questions or comments, I guess we just get to it. Is anyone interested in, um, making the motion, and I know we've got some, um.
Yeah, there's three draft motion.
Yeah, there's some recommending conditions. Austin, do you want to repeat, would you be able to read the motion, um, let me read the conditions, and then someone can tack on to that? If, if someone, yeah, if someone plans on recommending. So, you, we can recommend to approve the conditional rezoning submission as proposed, what we won't be doing. Uh, we can, uh, recommend to approve the conditional rezoning submission with additional conditions, which, um, Austin can read, hash for us.
You may.
Or we can recommend not to approve the conditional rezoning submission with, without specific conditions.
I have, I have a system if you want to read.
Yeah.
So, we've got options to approve.
And to, to go over these specific conditions, as either recommended by staff will discuss, that the CCRs for the development shall be reviewed and approved prior. This states the land development permit, it can be during the construction document phase, which is a prerequisite anyway to the, uh, land development permit, or it can be prior to the final plat. Um, so, I think the land development permit would mean that, once again, it would come to you guys during the, if approved, the construction documents phase. So, that's, that's my recommendation. Um, require a photometric plan for all pedestrian facilities and signs during the zoning, or during, that needs to probably be during the construction, um, plan phase.
Absolutely.
Once again, that's kind of showing the photometrics of the lighting and design, and some of that will already be kind of, need to be, once again, re-reviewed by your guys' hat as the R B board to, to an extent, um, if approved. Development shall be subject to the Village Marvin Engineer Standard Manual, that's a pretty standard one. Um, the maintenance plan shall be submitted for consideration. Uh, the, discuss any recommended and road improvements and traffic calming with NCDOT. Some of that has already been addressed, but we can also add that in there, just once again, if where those conversations are keep, keep on going. Um, do we want to take out, discuss being lieu or potential improvements, or do we want to leave that as a potential recommendation? The discuss being lieu or potential improvements to be made by the developer for the proposed on any partner. Do we want to leave that?
All right, so, because you said that's a work of motion, that, you know, I've been working with that for years.
That's fine.
Take that out?
Yeah, that's fine.
That's where you're at, so.
And then the next.
And then the. We're dedicating, we're dedicating the trail, the light trail after all those improvements you've done, and then dedicating a part.
So, and then the, the two discussion, or the two recommendations made tonight were that no, no fencing shall be allowed in the front yard, and that request that we, uh, the applicant received comments from Union County Public Schools on school capacity prior to the public hearing.
And that the applicant agreed to remove the, the variance, yeah.
The deviation.
The deviation.
Remove the deviation on side rear setbacks.
For accessory structures, I guess.
I, actually, there's one question I just realized, um, the median here, because this is just, I'm getting older, I can't.
Sure.
Is this going to, um, keep the neighbors across the street from taking the left onto New Town Road?
That'll be something that when we do the driveway permitting construction plan, we'll have to go out and do a total survey and locate all those. That will actually set the width and where we have to have cut across or things like that, so.
So, can we ensure that they'll be able to take the left?
Yes, D O T won't make the private residence, it'll only turn right out when they went on the west track, yes.
Okay, so this is more just for.
Yeah.
Controversial.
If I made it much smaller, nobody would see it.
That's really nice, that'd be terrible.
Yeah.
That would be terrible, yeah, okay. As long as it didn't that, that's true, it's.
Right, yeah.
Because if not, it's gonna be.
Well, and that's why with application of this.
There's a thing that can tickle up on her.
That's why.
Look, I feel my brother, I'm trying to take a look down the hallway.
I know, I know.
Do you remember doing this?
Already having that as, after writing a progress track, that should be covered, is, you know, if approved, definitely want to have discussions with D A T and work on, you know, making sure that this is from a traffic safety standpoint, and all the improvements are met.
All right, well, thank you for answering my questions, but I just realized that, Austin, I'm surprised you didn't say anything.
My job was down here, I hadn't thought about that, but the residents do deserve to be able to turn left, I think.
Yeah, that was what, they were the folks that actually thought about that, that we were lining right up with them, so that's why.
Yeah, very good, man.
I still think you can't tell, without saying, they're pretty comfortable turning around.
Without, but that's why you don't get a price.
So, um, we either need a recommendation to approve or a recommendation not to approve, so if I could have one of our planning board members, and Michael Bellis is suggesting that can or can't make that recommendation, um, so we're ready for your recommendation or, um, or not, non-recommendation.
To approve with the conditions, if you're.
With the conditions, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe not with the.
Well, that's my thing, like, I don't feel like we set out pragmatically, like, I appreciate what you're saying, though, like, we can always say no, like, we set out these parameters.
Right.
Right, and technically, they need the parameters, so what's the point of setting parameters when people are gonna meet them and then us say no? Like, that seems, like, if it didn't, they're like, I'd probably ask them, I'd set up utility to, like, why, I just. They also have very easy, very meaningful.
Well, we'll go to number two.
Okay, well, there we are. All right, so who would like to make the motion, um, with Austin saying, did it, you know, with the conditions?
Uh, I, I recommend that we approve with the recommendations, now, can you read them, Austin?
Yes, one more time, CCRs for the development shall be reviewed and approved prior to a land development permit. Require a photometric plan for all pedestrian facilities and signs during the construction plan phase. Development shall be subject to the Village of Marvin Engineering's standard manual. The maintenance plan shall be submitted for consideration. Uh, discuss any recommended road improvements and traffic calming with NCDOT. No fencing shall be allowed in the front yard. Receive car, excuse me, receive comments from Union County Public Schools on school capacity prior to the public hearing, and to remove the deviation on side and rear setbacks for accessory structures.
I need a second. I'll sit.
All on the table, please signify by raising your hand or saying, I'm.
Aye.
All right, so moved.
Thank you.
You're on, you're on the.
You're on to step eight.
Excellent.
You're on to step eight.
Just for, I was going to, for planning board and everybody here, so now, as we go, we'll be on council agenda, just to call for a public hearing next week. Uh, there will be no discussion by council, um, it might ask just a few questions, but something will be, like, fully presented during their work session. Public hearing, it should be ten, we scheduled August ninth, that's two days in there regularly. Uh, during that time, all the same stuff will be presented, and I think will be packaged, uh, the public will be notified, uh, the hall will be in, probably, it will be notified, and, uh, you know, we'll send out the, the notice, if their opportunity comes before, and it's comments, whatever, all that's taken into consideration, council will decide, I think, but.
I do.
Okay, um, well, that was my.
Actually, I.
Um, so, it was actually, I don't.
And we, we don't have any.
Um, so then, uh, with the module, we're having our comments, and, um, Mike just stepped up, so, um, uh, Ken? Do you have any comments as we close out our meeting?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Great, Kent, a teen. Any comments, Kent? Okay, good, yeah. Um, any comments?
I guess, um, for all of us, we're gonna do, if Marvin was having service, I hope that they will put voice up, that's all we have.
We'll have to say that, but, uh, again, it's that, that very much a work issue, and there's a lot of hard work to put in here, and Paul's looking, we love the way that everything looks outside. Driving past it, it looks really good, so, thank you for getting a, uh, ten-ton cooler, because it feels good here.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry.
Um, I'll, I have those things that were sent previously, um, the way that you guys put all these materials together was really helpful to make it very clear whether they were influenced or not, so, um, thank you for all of that, and I was trying to buy a minute some time, maybe he squashes his.
Oh, I hear trash can.
I was just gonna say, I think it would be.
You're, you're up, dude.
What for?
More comments, you're the last one.
Um, I want to take the opportunity to, uh, thank John Jones, um, for his service, uh, he's very disappointed, but I totally understand why he had designed John's been in 30 years. And every step, he's been a great grand, and a great ass kid for whatever he's done in Washington, P and L, I hope that's.
And I, I believe Austin count that, that they were gonna do some tough dedication, special.
We're gonna have a guilt fight for John.
Good.
It's in progress, we'll be a few weeks down.
When we see that, how much that planning board, if you guys are coming back, council meeting and so on, uh, we're gonna make sure you guys are uniformed to be there.
Um, gentlemen, do you have any comments before we close our meeting?
You burnt all mine earlier. You, you can see, you can see a problem, it's saying things.
Robert Mockley, do you have any comments?
Um, you've got to bring, uh, bring your wife with you, uh, this is important, uh, since you're still thanking for, you know, the process that you're doing. And this is potentially, and, uh, you know, a whole floor, so, uh, thank you for doing, you know, giving it due diligence to do.
All right, and with that, um, do you have any, okay, I'll second. Okay, we're done.